The first item up is the public hearing for Blaze Brewery. And I'm assuming there is a gentleman from Blaze Brewery here. Hi, how you doing, Andy?
Hi there. Good evening. Andy Morrell from BH2M. Thanks for having us again. Real briefly, I just want to go over some of the items we talked about last time. I have some more concrete answers for you guys. So, the applicant is looking to submit our DEP permit hopefully in the next week or two. Ken Gardner is in the process of redesigning the septic system to accommodate the full size of the brewing facility. Soon as I get that, I will send that into you guys to review. I did talk to the applicant and we had talked about whether the beer brewing process material would be sent to a tank, or whether it would go to the septic system. It is going to be designed to go to the septic system. There won't be floor drains in the facility, so that is in the works. I will submit that to you guys when I have that all together. There was a discussion about the building height. I talked to the architect. The building height is 23 feet as currently proposed. Twenty-three feet high from the ground to its highest elevation. Last time, the board had asked me, I believe it was you, Madam Chairman, who'd asked me if he was intending to put seats in the brewery.
Right. And it was going to be in the annex, I believe.
Yes. So, I talked to the applicant and so, as the board knows, the applicant's ultimate plan is to build a pavilion on the other side of the parking lot where he'd like to have a restaurant and accommodate people for the brewery and a restaurant. In the interim, he would like to put some seats into the brewery that could accommodate some of these things as he's moving along. So, there'll be kind of a combination of some seats in the brewery and in the annex building
Okay.
that will accommodate people to have some beer or to potentially have some food. So, that's the goal, is to, short-term, have some seats in the brewery facility. Ultimately, when the pavilion gets opened, move everybody over there and then this will just strictly be a brewery moving forward. So, I wanted to make sure the board heard that from me, that that's what the applicant's plan is. That's really all that's changed since you guys have seen anything, so I'll throw it back to you, Madam Chairman.
Okay. Well, it's a public hearing, so I'm going to open it up to the public.
Sounds great.
Anybody, you might want to stay at the mic, Andy, just in case anybody has any questions.
Will do.
Anybody here for the brewery? If you are, if you could please go up to the mic, state your name and street address and ask whatever questions you want. Just go right up to the podium there where Andy was.
Chris Gillespie, right across the street, 178 Dulles Ridge Road.
Okay. Can you make sure the secretary has your name? Did you get it, Donna?
Chris something.
Chris Gillespie, G.I.L.L.E.S.P.I.E. I've just, being a resident of the area,
Yep.
I haven't heard any definitive plans of where things are, so maybe a description or a site plan. I know the
Right, right.
last time we were here, there was nothing.
Okay. I'll have Andy come up and show you the plan. He has it there.
I've got big ones here.
Well, there's one right here.
There's one.
If you just turn the thing around.
No, no.
Excuse me, this is the second project we're discussing. Sorry.
Let's let Andy do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, Madam, maybe you could describe, or, I mean,
Sure.
You know better than me just looking at it, like you could describe where in the document.
Sure.
Can you see it? Well, do you want him to bring it closer? I mean, we've all seen it, so, there you go.
The last time, and I don't want to go to the mic every time.
Yes, please. Because we're being broadcast and people at home need to.
The last time we were here, I think the plan was for it to be directly across the street from my house in what used to be the old Strawberry Patch. So, I don't know if plans have changed. I've heard something that it's going to be way down
Right.
behind the farm. They've put a road in with power down off Tuss Lane, so I just want clarification on where stuff is going to be and.
Sure. So, where are you looking at, sir? So, here's the existing farm. Here's the existing farm driveway.
Yeah, so I'm just up the road.
Okay.
So,
All right, so this is.
There is a big field still that I believe is going to be Blaze's property if everything's finalized.
So, this is the existing driveway coming into the farm. This is the existing farm here. What we're doing is we're coming in through that existing entrance and then we're turning this way and coming back into here, up to the top of the hill. This is where there'll be kind of a loading area. This is the brewery and annex building. This is the parking lot. Someday, there'll be another building built on this side of the parking lot.
So, could you answer?
Tuss Lane is kind of down in here, as you know.
So, could you answer his question about whether there's going to be a building on this, where the current, or where the strawberry growth farm?
I don't know of anything that the applicant has planned on that
Okay.
that portion of the site, but.
This current site does not include what was the Strawberry Garden.
That's correct.
Yeah. Do you have any more questions, Chris? Is that?
No.
If you do, just go to the mic and ask them. That's okay. That's okay. Sure.
This probably doesn't concern, but I've heard rumors from cell towers.
Well, that's the best, that's the best thing to do, is get the rumors answered right now.
Exactly, exactly, so.
What were the rumors, by the way?
Well, I don't know if they're rumors, but I don't know. I heard something about a cell tower going in.
Cell tower?
But.
No, we've never heard it. That hasn't come to our attention at all. No.
Okay. So, and again, I would imagine there'd be a whole approval process or something like that in the future.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the neighbors would get notified, the butters.
Okay. So, this is the biggest thing, just hearing stories from neighbors on where things are going to go. I just wanted to
Yeah.
see something. Because last time with the initial process, it was something on a napkin or something.
You're familiar where the temporary setup was last summer?
Yeah, correct.
Pretty much that area. That's the same spot.
Further, that temporary area was kind of like already near. Just to give you some perspective.
Okay, yeah. I was just, I had a few questions if it was going to be where it was originally proposed, just being right across the street.
Right. Originally, they were kind of like in down here.
Yeah. Trucks in and out with houses and.
Mm-hmm.
So, that was not concerned.
Yep.
Actually, the cell tower isn't really a rumor. I believe the owner of the remaining land plans on putting a cell tower in there.
Well, we haven't heard anything about it.
No, but it's not a rumor. I mean, we've, yeah, we have. They discussed it.
Earl?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I don't, did he? Does anyone else remember that?
I believe, I believe.
No, no, I don't think so.
I believe one of the drawings, he showed where he would possibly put a cell tower.
Why don't any of us remember it? None of us?
Rumor.
Seriously, was it?
He hasn't been to the planning board to do it.
No, there hasn't been anything before the planning board to do that, so.
But he might have said it on the side to somebody.
He may have said it to somebody.
Yeah, I heard through someone else.
Heard it through the grid.
Yes, sir. If you want to go to the mic, please.
Jonas Sansa, I live on Dulles Ridge, on the other side of the road. I'm just curious. This brewery is what's going to be the 23 feet high. Do you have an idea what the footprint's going to be on the restaurant?
I don't. I know it will certainly be quite a bit smaller than this building.
Oh, really?
But I don't have, I don't have an actual size on that.
Okay. But it's going to be smaller than brewery?
Yes, that's what he's thinking at this time, yes.
And originally, this is redundant. They had talked about a different access road, but now you're just currently going to use the existing driveway and work off that.
Correct.
You going to expand that?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right, I'll turn. Nope, nope.
Things come, things come to mind.
That's good.
So, in terms of the traffic going in and out, like we've had a lot of discussions about traffic on the road and safety and whatnot. The speed limit is kind of ridiculous on that 90-degree corner, but I would imagine with a brewing facility, what kind of trucks are you going to have going in and out of there on that sharp corner? Like, is that something that you can answer? I would imagine if you'd have trucks full of supplies, full of, if there's a furniture or a restaurant in the future, you're going to have inventory going in and out.
Well, one thing, when they do decide to do the restaurant, they'll have to come back and go through the process again, so all the neighbors would be notified and there'd be another public hearing.
But even with this plan, they're still going to be.
Right, I understand that, but, right.
So, I just didn't know if there was anything that was going to address that. Like, it's 45 coming up and around that corner.
Speed limit?
Speed limit, yeah.
I had talked with the state a while back, when the original, last year or so, when the original plan came in, and I'd have to go back and look at my notes from last year, but the state was willing to put some sort of signage or flashing light in there that would warn people to slow down. I'd have to go back and review my notes to see exactly what they said.
And I know I was encouraged to come to the selectmen's meeting and voice that, too, and I certainly will.
Well, the place to address that, not, you know, you can obviously talk to the select board, but the place to address the concerns are here because we're the ones that put the conditions on the plan and approve the plan, so if you do have, you know.
Well, I would encourage anyone to try to drive 45 miles an hour up and around that corner. I drive that every day, multiple times a day, and you just can't safely. People do. So, with big trucks coming in and out and having to pull into
Right.
another lane to make the swing, that's.
That's an enforcement problem, though. It's nothing to do with the planning board.
Okay, the planning board. Bob, you had questions?
Yeah, I, a couple of questions. One, when you said to the answer the question regarding whether there was going to be seating in the brewery, the annex building, and if I understood correctly, you said that there would be some seating in the brewery. My question is, does that change the restroom situation? Is that adequate to handle that?
It is, and the septic system that I've got shown on here, we're making some adjustments to that to make sure that that can accommodate everything. But there are bathrooms in both the brewery and the annex
Oh, okay.
that'll accommodate that.
All right. The second question I had earlier, you were talking about, and I probably didn't hear it correctly, and I want clarification on. You said that there were, were going to be or not going to be floor drains in the brewery?
There will not be floor drains.
There will not be, okay. So,
Yep.
cleaning of that equipment, I guess I don't understand why, how they would do that without floor drains, but I guess that's not my problem. Okay, well, my question was, is if they were hosing down this equipment, sterilizing the equipment or whatever they do to it, that water's going to go somewhere.
Right.
Does that go into the septic system, and if so, then we need to size that enough to do that, or does it go somewhere else?
Right. It's going to be going to the septic system, and that's kind of what we're working on, is making sure we've got this thing sized to accommodate all of the flow that we expect to go there.
That's what Kenny Gardner is redesigning for, correct?
Correct, yes.
So, there would be a floor drain that goes into the septic system?
So, I don't, I don't, I spoke to the applicant, asked him specifically, are you going to have floor drains? And he said, no, I'm not going to have floor drains. So, I don't know exactly what the plan's going to be to collect this processing material and somehow get it taken care of. I can talk to him about that and get some more details on.
Well, I mean, he could run that into the septic system.
Yeah.
But he'd have, it seems like he'd have to have a floor drain.
Yep. You're going to have to collect it somehow, right?
Any other questions from the board?
What they're concerned of is having floor drains and then just having, you know, employees push stuff in there that they shouldn't be and it go into the septic system, so. It's kind of a double-edged sword of whether you, you know, put something like that in, so.
Well, they can mop it up, but it seems like a lot of work.
Yep.
Any other questions? Craig?
I'm good.
Okay, we will close the public hearing then. And basically, what we do is we have, I don't know, 30 days to make a decision, but we always like to do it sooner. So, once we hear the next applicant discussion ending, we'll talk about whether we're going to do the conditional use permit tonight, which we can do probably, or wait until June 2nd. It depends about how many concerns they have, okay? You're welcome to stay and wait, or call us tomorrow.
No, I'll stay in.
Okay. All righty, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next applicant is Ray Marshall. Ray, we have your material from, that you dropped off last week. Welcome back to Leamington.
Hi, everybody.
Oh, gosh. You know, Donna, look. Donna, I have it right here. Sorry about that. Sorry, 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 sorry. So, could you, I guess what we're looking for tonight is to just have you give us an overview of what
Okay.
changes are that you plan to do down there.
Okay.
And for the public, this is Mr. Marshall, who is going to, who's proposed to have a campsite down off the Old Teederman Farm on.
11.
Route 11, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, Route 11. So.
Would you like me to have a copy up here for me, so if somebody has a question, I have something to refer to?
Do you want, here, take this.
Sure.
Okay.
So, in the beginning, we came before the planning board with a very elaborate campground representing RVs. Okay, with roads, septic system, power, water, all that.
Well, you had, it was mostly, it was going to be a lot of tents and.
No, in the beginning, it was RVs, and then, and then what I did was, I submitted an application to essentially proof the concept and forewent the RVs, because we never really knew with the state, with the DEP, if that was ever going to be approved or not. So, I said to Jim, what I'd like to do, instead of waiting and not knowing, I'd like to proof the system and submit a new application for a tent-site campground. Let's change the roads to trails. Let's leave the septic system the way it is.
Right, right.
I said, because nobody's going to complain that our septic system is oversized, all right? Nobody's going to complain that we're going to have two bathhouses versus one, so we don't really have to change much on the concept. We could just play around with the, instead of RVs, it's tents. Instead of roads, it's trails. Instead of, okay, so.
That's what we approved when, back in
Correct, correct.
whatever the date was.
Now, through waiting for the DEP, way over the 60 to 90-day review time, even if they had ever asked us for a 30-day extension, which they never did, they went well beyond that as well. But finally, we got the order, and much to my surprise, and, you know, I was happy that, okay, well, let's resubmit, let's submit our new application, and let's go back to the original plan. If you'll let me use this term, you guys, you folks here approved me for what I call the Volkswagen, which was tent sites, canvas tent sites.
Yes.
venues. I want, I really wanted for the town, the Cadillac. I wanted people to come in and see hard venues, sites where they would feel, let's say, we've had some storms here where I, we've had a barn door completely ripped off the barn at the Teederman Farm. I mean, nobody even knows where it is. So, the idea of just geodomes and canvas sites, a yurt or a teepee, there was a part of me that was uneasy about that, thinking that that could be a disaster if one of these microstorms come in. I would be much happier, I think people would feel much happier, if they had something much more substantial. And so, now that we've been officially approved through the DEP, and we've got our DOT permit for the access road, which is something that I asked Jim Seymour from the very beginning, please put an additional road in there if there's ever an obstruction on a road and somebody has an emergency, or, you know, you have, I feel like you should have to have an access road, and he agreed, and we have the permit for that now with DOT. So, I feel like the DOT permits onboard, the DEP official order has been delivered. I wanted to come back and re-represent the original plan, which was to have something much more elaborate than tents.
So, let me clearly, and I'm a teeny bit confused here.
Okay.
What you want now, when you said you wanted people to come in and see hard sites.
When I, okay, I called.
When this was coming in, the new one, when you say RVs,
Yep.
I envisioned RVs, wheels.
Yep.
People drive them and then they stay for a few days, then they leave.
No, okay, all right. I apologize. We were.
You're not thinking tiny houses, are you?
Yeah, from the very beginning, tiny homes. They're on a trailer, it's on wheels, it's mobile. Okay, from the very beginning, Jim Seymour had said to me, stop using the word tiny homes, because it said it's screwing around with people's heads. He says, stop using the word tiny homes and use the word RVs. So, I said, okay, I'll do that. Essentially, they're the same thing. And I'm not, I'm not playing on words. They really are. A tiny home venue is something that's on wheels. It's, and I've brought many pictures. Grace actually asked me to bring venues. I had several. I don't know if they're still kicking around, but they're portable, they're mobile, and we, Craig had talked, and there were certain concerns, well, what if there's like two steps to get up into it? I said, obviously, it would be, everything would be done to code. The pad site that it was on.
Which means each, each site will have to have its own septic system?
No. It's one, no, it's one master septic system. It's all designed. Let me, if you want to, I can get to that page, but no, that's all been done.
So, you're going to pump to the septic system?
Yes.
Every site?
Yep, except for the geodomes. But now, you, okay, you remember now, there's, there's two bathhouses.
Right.
Okay, okay, I just, I just misspoke. I apologize. I made a mistake. The, the bathhouses will be piped to the septic system. The individual RVs will not, okay? I, let me get to that. Can I lay this out flat someplace?
Sure.
Also, you had, you got a permit for both of these entrances?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not going to be able to pick this up, because if he's going to talk there. Talk into the mic.
Okay. I'm hoping to find the page here.
What page are you looking for now?
I'm not even sure. I'm not, I'm not sure what page would explain the septic system. I wish I did know what page.
Sheet 1114 that shows all the sites?
Thanks, Darryl. 11, 1114?
1114.
Okay, there you go. I've got it right here. Let me go back there now.
Page 1114, okay, yep.
Okay, so the concept is that the bathhouses will be pumped to the septic system, and there are two of them located on this.
I don't see one.
Where is it? Where?
On page one. There should be, there should be one close to the center and then one close to the access road.
Oh, I see one over here. It's not, well, I didn't think that was a bathhouse. When you're looking at this sheet.
Yep.
Is it? Can you?
One of them a rectangle, the other one's a square?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so.
Thank you for pointing that out on that smaller diagram.
So, this is a bathhouse?
Yep. Thank you, Darryl. I don't have the smaller version.
And this one here is a bathhouse that's, okay. That?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, go, go ahead.
Okay, so that's what would be taken place. The bathhouses would be pumped to the septic system, not the individual units.
So, how would the individual units be taken care of?
Are there bathrooms in those things?
No.
Oh.
No bathrooms?
No.
Is there going to be a sink in it?
Is there going to be a sink in it? I'm going to say, no.
Well, either there is or there isn't.
Okay, no.
Yeah.
No kitchen?
Nope.
So,
So, it's basically.
When I walk into this thing, what do I see?
You see living quarters.
Yeah.
You've got your grill outside. You've got your picnic table, et cetera, et cetera. And if you need to go to the bathroom or you need to go wash your dishes, when I go to campsites, if I go to the bathroom, oftentimes in back of the bathrooms, they'll have like a stainless steel.
Right.
You know.
When I walk into one of these cabins or whatever.
There's sleeping arrangements in there?
Sleeping arrangements, a common area, you know, loft or bunk bed, you know, like that for kids, you know, like that. They're very narrow. The tiny homes are narrow. They're small, they're small footprints, they're small square footage, 300, 400 feet, you know. I think we have, we've met the requirements that we said that they wouldn't exceed X amount of square footage at one point. Somebody did ask that question. I think it was you, Joyce.
Because there is, there is a square foot limit.
Right, and whatever.
As high as some tiny houses.
Whatever the limits are and whatever the, whatever the town requires or whatever the campsite rules require with the state, all that stuff will be adhered to.
And it will be strictly seasonal.
Strictly seasonal, yes, strictly seasonal.
So, are you buying these or building them?
I hope, a little bit of both. I hope the repurposed material here in Maine, I hope to get, I was actually speaking with a gentleman over the weekend, and he says he's going to put me in touch. I love the idea of people redoing or taking down buildings and getting ahold of us. And he actually had three doors that came from a building. I forgot what he said it was. He knows what I'm trying to do. I want to incorporate character, charm, history with certain venues on the farm. That's what my particular interest, interest is. And having something unique, you know, like a small silo. They make the building, it's oval, it's out of metal, with the, with the roof on it. It sounds big, it's not. They're small.
Do you have a plan for this?
For this, for this particular one, I don't. I want.
For any of these buildings?
No, I don't have any plans yet. I didn't, I didn't go buy plans, because the infrastructure portion of this project is going to be the lion's, it's going to be the heavy lift. You know, the septic system, the bathhouses, the roads, the power, the water. Once the pad sites are all developed, where they, where they need to be, and all the mechanicals and all the infrastructures in place, it's not that I won't be doing my homework and finding out what's going to be cost-effective and things like that, but that's, that's when the rubber really starts hitting the road, when your pad sites start getting to the point where you could actually bring in a venue. And there's, there's a heavy lift to get it to that point. So, am I putting the cart before the horse and am I trying to price venues right now? No. I have a pretty good idea what they're going to be going for, but at that point, it'll be different again, okay? I'm, I just have to make sure my square footage is, my square footage requirements are being met and that the pad sites are being done in such a way that they're safe.
So, once this little, whatever you're going to call it, is built on the pad, it will permanently remain there?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily be built on the pad. I've got the big barn there. I've thought this through pretty well. If I'm going to try to build certain venues, we'd build it in the barn out of the elements, and then we'd move it to the pad site.
But once you moved it to the pad site, it would be permanently?
Yes, until, until we either decide to change it, because then what you would do is you'd take your skirting off of the venue, you'd expose the tongue, you'd back up your vehicle to it, your dually, whatever, one of my trucks, and you'd move it. Maybe you're going to relocate it, maybe you're going to bring, maybe you're going to get rid of that one, you're going to sell it, and you're going to bring in something more elaborate and fancier, not, not necessarily bigger square footage. The square footage aspect will always meet the requirements. I'm going to make sure that Craig is never coming in there and saying, Ray, that looks like it's, no, it's not going to happen. Whatever the requirements are and whatever the limitations are, they're always going to be met. They're always going to be met. There's never going to be any deviating. There's never going to be any executive decisions on my part to do something that I want versus what I'm supposed to have. That's not who I am. That's just going to make everybody upset that they, that they allowed me to have what I, what I got.
I have a question.
Joe?
Go ahead, Darryl.
How many people you will be allowed to stay in these?
They're going to vary. Some, some venues.
What's max, what would be the maximum?
I'm thinking four to six would be the max.
So, 25 of them, right?
Yeah, but six, a certain amount of them are domes. I believe the DEP approved me for 18 RV sites. Okay, tiny home sites, RV sites, and then I think it's seven or eight domes. The geodesic dome is a, is a venue, is a model or template that I'm absolutely in love with. I.
What's hard to believe, these people are going to walk to one of these bathhouses to go to the bathroom every time they have to go to the bathroom? I mean, in the RV park, they have, they hold their own.
Right.
Well, I will say this, with all the camping I've done, and I've gone camping hundreds of times, I've always ended up having to walk the kids to the bathhouses, and I've always walked myself. I'm not saying I never ducked into the woods, but I'm saying, as a rule, that's, that's, we can't.
Sure.
So.
Would you take the mic, Craig, please?
This doesn't have a kitchen and a bathroom in it. That's not a tiny house.
Right.
There's not a size limit to it. It's not a 400 square foot. If they don't have a bathroom and a kitchen, it's not a tiny home.
Not a house.
It's not a house. So, there's not a size requirement
Okay.
on that.
Okay.
So, if we're not going to put one, then, I mean, all he's got to have is a 5,000 square foot pad site and do what you want, unless you put a size limit on it.
What do you envision, Ray, the size limit of each of these?
Very mobile. Very, very mobile.
What, 300 square feet, 200 square feet?
I don't, I don't have the research on that right now, but I do know this. I want it to be interchangeable. I want it to, so that if I want to change the venue, I don't have to be stuck with something. I want it to be interchangeable, I want it to, so that if I want to change the venue, I don't have to be stuck with something. Uh, there's nothing that's gonna be permanent about any one of these RVs, mobile homes, whatever you wanna call them, there's nothing permanent. Unpack it, so to speak, pull up with the truck, move it. Replace it with something better, maybe, maybe it's been there for five years and maybe it's taken on some wear and tear and you wanna replace the unit, I mean, you know, like that.
I have a question?
Yes.
Um, I, I heard you say that there might be skirting around these?
Yeah, I would...
And so if skirting is put around it, that doesn't make it permanent?
No, no. That, you know, so, say this, say, say hypothetically, you drive by a trailer park, just hypothetically. You notice how you're not, you don't see the exposed wheels, okay? They, they get rusty, the wheel, you know? So, no, there would be nothing permanent about it. And when I say skirting, I'm gonna try to be as creative as I can. It might be a garden around it, it might be, you know, some railroad ties and it's got the slot where you actually move the, you move the unit into it.
So the skirting isn't attached?
Uh, the, the skirting may be attached, it may be attached, but I'm saying there's also very creative ways to put skirting around something where it almost looks like it's attached, but it's not. If you picture a few railroad ties stacked and a horseshoe shape, maybe from the two or three, uh, railroad ties high, it transitions down to ground level. Say it's cedar chips, say it's some plants, some bushes, some shrubs, some landscaping, but in the hollow of the u, of the horseshoe shape, it's hollow. You can pull, you can pull something in and you can pull something out. I, I, I'm pretty creative and...
Your mobile home's skirting is perfectly removable, it just snaps off.
No, I, I realize that, but to me, that's not very aesthetically pleasing, in my opinion. Um, I would want something that was more, uh, appealing. I, I, people do it very tastefully done, I, I watch, I look at stuff all the time and I try to get ideas. The vinyl skirting is beautiful, the place we're staying at right now at six eighty-five is, it's, it's beautiful, but it's not necessarily what I like. I think I can do better.
I'll be honest with you, when I look at your farm, I just feel that this is the extension of it. I mean, as far as how you take care of the farm, I mean...
Can you pull your mic around?
I'm not following you.
The farm is not very good advertising for what this is gonna look like, is what I'm trying to say.
Right, right, right now, I was just there, uh, yesterday, and I've explained to Lucas and everybody else that's there, this is gonna drastically be changing momentarily. He's got a huge metal pile, it's all actually on a trailer right now, getting ready to be towed out of there.
Been on a trailer for a long time.
Okay, yep, and that's actually behind the red barn, it's actually not really inside.
I could buy it three or four times a day.
You know what's funny is I brought your name up and I said to Lucas and I said to Misty, I said, you know, I said, I gotta be honest with you guys. I said, Darryl lives with an eyes shot of this place, and, and Lucas corrected me, he said, no, he's not with an eyes shot, he's up to blah, blah, blah. And I said, no, but I said, what I know for a fact is, Lucas, I said, I know he drives by here every day. And I said, he's gauging what we're doing. I said, I've been asking you for a long time now to get this place cleaned up, and he's telling me he's done this, he's done that, he's done the other thing. Sometimes I wonder if I'm speaking Chinese when I'm speaking English. I can be very diplomatic when I have to be, I can also be another type of person when I have to be. I was just explaining to Evelyn, I'm gonna have to turn into the other, the other guy. Because people don't necessarily, uh, I have, I have different ways of communicating, I'm gonna have to communicate the way I, I need to now. It's all there is to it, because, yeah, I'm not happy, I'll be honest with you. I don't, I don't like the bed of the truck out...
I'm not talking about the quality of the buildings, I'm talking about...
I know what you're talking about. No, 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 I know, listen, I, I know what you're talking about, and I'll tell you what I mean. I asked him, how long has the bed of the truck been sitting there? How long is the, has the rack been sitting there? In Lucas's mind, um, that's nothing. And that's when I brought you up. And we walked out back and I showed him the pile of metal, I thought it was a big, huge pile of metal, then I realized it was on a trailer and I said, why is that still there? I said, why can't we just get it out of here? Oh, yeah, I've been meaning it. The, the dump truck body next to the silo, I said, you told me that you were working for your boss and you were, you know, switching everything over, and I said, how, you know, how soon are you gonna be able to get the, the scraps out of there, blah, blah, blah? I said, I said, Lucas, you gotta understand, every time I come here, there's only ever more, there's never less. And he laughed, he made a couple comments, I walked away scratching my head and I said, you know what? You're gonna have to turn into that, that other guy, and I'm gonna have to. And the guy's been so good to me that I, and I, and I, and I watched the way I handle him in front of his wife, because I don't wanna make anybody feel a certain kind of way, but I'm gonna have to take him to the side and I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to make my point a little bit, uh, more stern. I'm, I'm, I'm aware of that, unfortunately, I am. It's not, it's not something that you have to worry about, but I understand why you would be and that you are, I absolutely do.
I'm not the only one.
No, I can imagine...
We all drive by that.
Well, I, what I actually said to him, and, to be very candid, I said, I don't want to give Darryl any way to say that he was right in the end, that's gonna piss me off. So, I said, that's, that's what I said to him, but I didn't say it that stern, I said it more of like a friend talking to another friend, but, um, I was trying to make my point, and that, that was my words verbatim, so...
So can we turn to one other point?
I got it.
Yeah, go ahead, Pete.
Yeah.
Get the mic down.
Uh, my question is, the, uh, all these, uh...
RV, uh, we'll use the term RV for now.
Thank you, thank you.
These are gonna be placed on the slab?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, and the, uh, how's it gonna be powered? You gonna be, electrical power to these?
Yeah, there's gonna be, there's gonna be power to every one, there's gonna be power to every site. Whether it be on a, whether it be on a post or actually brought inside, I'm, I'm not quite sure yet.
What about water?
No water.
He said there's no kitchen, no bathroom, so...
Kitchen, no bathroom, no water.
So, so they're gonna, you're gonna have public water from to fill up a...
Yeah, I'm fully aware, and I, I kinda had a plan that other than the two bath sites, I'd wanna see if Jim thought it was reasonable, and also check with Craig and make sure that it's okay to have, uh, frost-free wells or some, closer, you know, you need to fill your pot or whatever, cause you're ma, you're boiling corn on your grill or whatever, you know? Not have to have people, and this, I, I don't like it when people are mixing, uh, domestic water with a bathroom. I can't stand it, the model where I'm from, they have the bathroom in the same area as the kitchen. To me, that's disgusting. So I'm gonna try to make it so that when people need just water, uh, that there's other areas to get it than having to go to, towards where the bathrooms are. That, that would be my...
So you're not planning to have like a spigot at each, uh, site?
No.
Okay.
No.
So, I can drive in with my own little home if I wanna?
No.
Okay.
No. That type of thing is, is not in this plan whatsoever, um...
Just asking, I didn't know what...
No, no, I understand, and I, no, the answer's no.
Okay, so, so that, that leads me to, um, segues into the roadways.
Yep.
Uh, I believe you were gonna do more paths in the past, they were gonna be...
More what?
They were gonna have pa, paths, however, whatever your accent is.
Well, the roads became paths because when I was just trying to get a campground approved through the town only, without any state approval.
But now we're reverting to they're gonna be roads.
Now we're going back to the original plan where those, that, where those roads were made as paths, just to simplify and dummy down the campground plan, we're gonna go with the original plan.
Okay.
And it, and at one time, the application here asked for if I would be looking for any variances. In the very beginning of this process, I, it might have been the first meeting, Jim Seymour had specifically asked, is there any way to get around the actual blacktop portion of this project? One of the members, I believe it was you, had specifically said, people have asked for variances in the past and we have granted them, that didn't mean you were gonna grant me one, but I did...
I, I think there's been, um, I was just reading through some old, um, town attorney questions I had posed for whatever the reasons were in the past.
Yeah.
And the, uh, if it's not a subdivision, and, uh, the planning board has the authority to determine what the covering will be, it does not have to be paving.
Okay.
So they, and, and it's not a variance, it's a decision the, the board can make. If it were like a my, a subdivision...
Yeah.
Or something like that, obviously, there would be other, um, ordinance requirements.
Okay. My thing is, blacktop seems so commercial, uh, the whole concept that I have in my mind is, is trying to stay away from this commercialism as much as possible. I think when you see the way the bathhouses are done, you'll, you'll understand that I'm not looking for Morton Building type style aesthetics, I'm looking for something that's more user...
Are they gonna be allowed to drive, drive down to their, to these sites?
Yeah, yep.
So they're parking for a car?
Yep. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I misspoke. I think the, I think the parking lot is where the cars will be left.
Is that maybe looking down there and unload, is that what you're saying?
I guess I don't understand, you got five thousand square foot devoted to each one of these sites, why would you not have a parking spot on there?
My, my, my thought, my thought was, with vehicles, you've got children, you've got bicycles, my thought was, I didn't feel like they would be conducive, but, having said that...
I mean, as a guest?
Okay.
I want my car.
Having said that, we have talked through this thing on a few occasions, I'm sure that once I get in the weeds with this development, I'm gonna have to come back to Craig with things, and I'm gonna ask him, is this gonna pose a problem? You know, here's what I'm finding out now, things are gonna change, and he may say to me, you know, that's something you're probably gonna wanna go back before the planning board. I'm not gonna tell you that every single thing that I've got on this plan is gonna be etched in stone and there's never gonna be any deviation. I can tell you this, if there's any so, ever anything that I speak to Craig about that he thinks that, you know, it needs to be, it needs to come back before you guys, that's what's gonna happen. People aren't, I'm not just gonna make executive decisions on my own and, and have you guys wondering, or scratching your head saying, what is this guy doing? I'm not gonna do that.
That'd be pretty, uh... I mean, if you get this approved, that's how you have to build it.
Yep.
And if you change your mind, you gotta come back.
Yeah, well, the thing, that's what he's doing.
It's gonna affect the roads and everything.
Well, that's what he's doing right now, is that we have a notice, notice of decision that was written for the tent site. So what he's coming back for now, I believe, is to get our, you know, whether we're going to approve of, of the paths being roads and, and if, roadways and what the topping will be, if we're going to, uh, approve of the, uh, whatever the facility, individual tiny RVs or whatever they're called, as opposed to tents. And that means we'll have to do an amendment to the notice of decision, just like we just had to do an amendment to the notice of decision for the solar farm because there were some requirements that were added. So, um, I, and, and is that your understanding, you guys, of what...
I'm getting a headache trying to figure the whole thing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't, the design baffles me, to be honest with you.
I, I think what...
Okay, well, here...
I think what would be helpful, I'm just speaking for myself now, is if you had a picture of what these RVE things are gonna look like.
Here's what I think I'd like to offer to do if I can. How about, how about we put this on for the first week of June?
Our next meeting would be June second, I think.
Okay, instead of me trying to, to ram and jam this down everybody's throat, I don't wanna do that. I'm gonna specifically get ahold of Jim Seymour, ask him if he can come in this time. I think that would be best.
Yep, and also, if you could have some pictures of what, of what...
I will definitely, I know in the past, great...
You can take pictures of things that you, of the ones that you...
That I like, yeah. I can do that, and I can do some research and get more. Can somebody tell me, before I leave, what the square footage, is there a square footage limit or no?
Yeah.
There is?
Yeah.
Okay.
On a tiny home, it's four hundred, four hundred square feet.
There is a square footage on this site.
All right, I'll tell you what I'm gonna do.
No, there isn't.
Wait, wait, wait a minute, that, Darryl has, Darryl, what were you gonna say?
Oh, I thought you were talking about the site.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, the site is five thousand square feet.
Yep, if it's okay, I'm gonna...
So if I understand correctly, let's get this put to bed, you're telling me that if there is no bathroom and there is no kitchen, there is no water, then it is not considered a home at all? It's basically a cabin?
It's a sleeping quarters.
And then the square footage goes away? So he can put whatever he wants on the site as long as it fits on that pad?
You could have a whole apartment inside a house as long as it doesn't have a kitchen, it won't be considered by this town.
Right, okay.
Okay. If it's okay.
Yep.
Not gonna, cause I see people are frustrated, and I don't want, I don't want...
Is it, I don't see how it's practical for somebody to come and rent one of these and leave their car up here and lug their stuff down.
Okay.
That's my problem.
I'm gonna, and I, and I took that in, when you said that, Bob agreed, I, I took that in, so I said to myself, well, let me go back to the drawing board with Jim. We've come this far, all right? I mean, we're at the peak, I can, I can see it, okay? So, I'm not gonna be rammie, I'm gonna slow down, I've done this, I've done this at least one, one other time with you guys. When I don't feel like I'm a hundred percent prepared, I just feel like it's best to take a step back, figure out what has to be done so that everybody's on board, everybody's in agreement, and everybody's happy. Does that make sense?
Well, I think, and once again, if, if, if Seberg wants to come in and if you have some pictures of what the facility...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back with some, I'm gonna come back with some actual venues, I like that, it's, it's fun.
And, and also the square footage that you believe each one of those buildings is gonna be?
I can do that, I can do that, that's easy. And we'll get, we'll get as deep in the weeds with this as, as we need to, and, uh, I believe that with Jim here, I'll be a lot better prepared than I am right now.
Go ahead, Pete.
The, uh, on your electrification...
Mm-hmm.
Now, you're gonna have, uh, lighting, exterior lighting?
Yeah, that, this, these, all these questions, this, that's when I really made the decision, when you guys asked me about the electrical. I want him to be here on the second, I'm gonna make sure, either tonight or tomorrow morning, he's gonna be available, he's gonna have all those particulars, Pete. He's gonna be able to tell you what amperage, you know, what's gonna be on each site, what's not gonna be on each site, he's got, he's got all the particulars. I, I guess I foolishly came here tonight thinking I could answer all those questions, and I can't.
Cause I think we'd like to see, uh...
Yeah, we, in our notice, we said, uh, there shall be lighting, adequate, adequate lighting of a sort approved by the CEO.
And lighting inside also.
Yeah.
I think, I think we were probably talking about more outside when we did this.
Well, is the inside gonna be electrified?
Yeah.
A big, a big concern of Pete's has been, since the beginning, has been the lighting, and I know that. And I would like him to be able to address that in a more exact definition, okay?
Weather like this, say, you're gonna have a small electric heater in there?
Okay, um, yeah, it's a good question.
Well, in the summer, most campers don't have heats.
No, I was just talking about this...
If you're going camping, you gotta rough it a little bit.
Just, just over the weekend, I was just talking about temporary heating, because, you know, your season can be now, and at night, you know, it's fifty, fifty-five degrees. I will have, you know, it's so funny, I wonder if you go, I wonder if you folks could do this for me? The second is only a couple weeks away, do you think you guys could get together and just, just jot down half a dozen, eight, ten things that you'd really like to have a better definition of?
Oh, I've got some stuff here, we can do that.
And I'm gonna write down, obviously, what Pete brought up, what Darryl and Bob brought up about the parking, uh, the water, you know, I, I have that, but if anybody thinks of anything else, if somebody shoots me an email, it'd be such a huge help. That way, I, I will admit, in my own defense, I did call Craig and I actually reached out, you know, to a couple people, thinking that if somebody wanted something, I could come in better prepared. It's hard when you get there and then you're just being hit with, you know...
Right, well, this is our first opportunity to discuss it.
No, I, I understand.
But, you know, one thing about the heating thing, I personally would not be, be comfortable with, uh, plug-in heating units, they can be too many fires.
Okay.
So I think, to me, when you go camping...
Yeah.
You better be prepared to go camping.
You better have your sleeping bag.
You know, I've been to a, I've been to a number of campgrounds on state where...
Okay.
Where we have rented a cabin within, and I've never seen one without heating.
Yeah, but this is not, you had a cabin with a kitchen and a bathroom, I'll bet.
Uh, it did, but, uh, I'm just talking about the heating piece.
Okay.
You, yeah, I don't see how you, especially in Maine, how, how you can't...
Okay.
I, I don't see that.
I never thought that I'd wanna do this, but I really do wanna put it off, I think Jim's just gonna be a huge help.
If you're talking RV.
Yeah.
Now, RVs...
Also, you can keep the size of your road down by making the main road...
RVs are confusing to...
Well, RV only has one entry.
Instead of trying to go both ways on it.
In, in what you think of as an RV.
Yeah.
Now, these here, probably have a negative...
I'm not sure how you can do it, but that's one way to keep...
You know, this, this is all stuff that I just happened to know for an absolute fact because Jim is just so much more versed in this stuff, this isn't his first campground. He's just gonna be so much better prepared than I was tonight.
So you wanna be on the agenda for June second?
If it's possible, that would be, that would be a huge help to me, gives me a couple weeks to get some real research done with the venues, the square footage, and, and me pick Jim's brain about the things that, all the things that you guys have come to me at, it's easy for me to keep track of what they are, it's not that big of a deal. And, um, tell him, tell him the direction that tonight went, and that I need to be better prepared on the second, I need his help, that's all.
Okay, so, uh, right now with the agenda for our next meeting on the second is we have a conditional use permit for, uh, uh, camp on a pond that wants to be restructured, so you would be on it, um, probably around seven thirty.
And I'm not gonna lie, um, I come in here tonight at a little bit of disadvantage because when I got to the farm with Evelyn yesterday, I was disgusted, and this is gonna give me two weeks to make sure that the next time I come in, that man over there looks at me and says, thank you, or, or, what's that?
Can I ask you just one question, this probably...
Yes, sir.
But, there's rumors that there was, what?
Tell me.
Troopers over to that place.
There was, there was, not gonna deny it, I was, I was, nope. What happens is, is there's a woman who's got some mental health issues, which I have a lot of, uh, uh, sympathy for. I have a family member that has similar, uh, things, and I, I don't claim to understand it all. But I did explain to that person that Monday morning I had to call the attorney, unless they were gonna voluntarily take the money they owed me and use it to move on down the road. I don't want it, I want you to keep the money and just use it to get the next place for the next chapter of your life, but it can't continue to be there. I didn't hear from him, so it, I guess I'm gonna end up having to take the lawyer route, but, um, yeah, it's un-
So is it tenor?
Yeah, it's, it's unfortunate, yeah.
All right, that's not about business-
It's not my guy Lucas.
Well, it can't, that, that's a personal thing that cannot be discussed publicly here. So I don't wanna hear any more conversation about that. Oh, I know, I understand, I'm not talk, I'm talking to all of us.
Okay.
To me, that's not something we should be discussing right now.
Joyce, can I just make a-
Yes, Victoria has a comment.
Um, in terms of parking, I'm, I know you're not gonna do a survey or anything, but there are people who remotely camp out in the wilderness, they don't expect to have their cars there. And then there are people who are gonna look at this and say, huh, I don't understand why I can't have a car here, because it's more oriented towards cars.
I'm gonna-
So you might wanna ask around, and you're gonna get a different type of camper than you expect if you don't have parking.
I'm favoring the parking, because hearing Robert say what he was, and Darrell saying what he was, I am definitely gonna say to Jim, is it realistic with a five thousand square foot pad site that we could accommodate every venue with a, with a parking space? And do you think that, do you think that becomes an issue with? I always worry about the kids, I, I have five, I just, kids, kids, kids. I don't necessarily worry about somebody having to walk to their pad, more so than I do a kid being around a car or a vehicle that doesn't necessarily see them. So I'm always thinking that way, I need to think into it more, and I need to talk to Jim, because obviously, it's a big concern. And from what you're saying, Victoria, you think it would be a, a huge attribute if people could have a, a car on-
I think so, with this type of-
You're not the only one, you're not the only one, I'm definitely getting that.
Because, that, remote camping, you expect it. You know, if you're camping up a mountain, your car's not going up that kind of hiking up.
This isn't that.
But this type of campground-
Yeah, this isn't that.
You would expect your car to be there.
You're going to this campground, hopefully, for the conveniences of this campground, I, I totally get that. And you know what? There's a huge learning curve in this for me, because I've never developed a campground. The fact that this, you know, if you guys remember, this is not the first thing I came in here for with this property. It has evolved into this. The funny story behind that is, people would say to me intermittently, when I was here, you know, the funny thing about Maine is there's thousands of campsites and nothing's ever available. And then all of a sudden, it finally entered the dense, you know, block of a head that I have, and I was like, wait a minute. How many campgrounds are there in Livingston? And then somebody said, none, and I was like, well, wait a minute, we're on the Saco River, it's a beautiful piece of property. That's why we're here. And we'll figure it out, we'll figure it out together, and we'll make sure that when we make a decision, or when something's finally decided, people aren't scratching their head saying, wait a minute, what? No, we'll, we'll do the right thing. I promise.
People that are running around camping, have everything inside their vehicle, truck or whatever.
Yeah.
What's that?
If you drive, didn't wanna rent it, you'll say, yeah, you can park here, but you gotta lug it all the way down here. I think I'd move on and find by someplace where I didn't have to do that.
And believe me, when you make a comment to me like that, being an actual camper yourself, it's sinking in, it's, it's hitting home, trust me. I mean, that's the majority of the panel here tonight, so I have to, I need to revisit this with Jim. I can't see myself ever envisioning myself doing another campground without, without wanting from, from minute one, making sure that whatever you're developing, you're developing an actual parking space for the sites. I didn't originally do that, it was my oversight, it was my, my mistake, but you learn, you know, you learn.
I think, I think, are there any more concerns? Yep?
You've never ridden around to different campgrounds?
We, we passed Hidden Meadows today, and I said, we need to go there.
Where's that?
Um, I have talked to Lucas, and I asked him, where are the other campgrounds? I wanna go, I wanna visit, I wanna ask if it's okay to look around. No, I have officially not done that, because I've been kinda crazy busy, but I want to.
Acres of Wildlife has tons of kids, and they have very low, um, miles per hour, like every few-
Speed bumps and all that jazz, okay.
So, you know, and I don't think there have been a lot of accidents with kids, but it can be done.
Yeah, there's a way to accommodate, there's a way to do everything sensibly, I agree with you. And I, if, you know, if you could be a fly on the wall and hear my conversations with Jim, I'm gonna be advocating for, definitely, for people to be able to have access to their, to their venue. And hope that, and hope that his plan, is what I hope to hear, that his plan accom- can accommodate that, that's what I hope to hear. We'll, we'll see. I might have, I might have a lot more work to do. It's not the worst thing that's ever happened to me, I love work. We're just, we just wanna make sure we get it right.
Okay.
What about the, the river that you're gonna have for recreational, what, what about other recreational areas? You gonna have anything like, if you've got twenty-five sites and just two kids, that's fifty kids.
Yep.
That's the individual parent's problem.
No, no, I love his question, because I've talked to Jim, I've said, Jim-
If he's gonna turn it into a playground, we have another whole issue.
We're gonna go to a camping area, they have all that at camping area.
You're talking about pickleball, and you're talking about, you're talking about things like that, right?
Oh, the Vanshun's type of camping, are you, are you glamping, or are you camping? Are you glamping, or are you camping?
It's not glamping if you have to walk from where you sleep to the bathroom, that's camping.
Well, here's, here's, here's the thing, right? Are you gonna have horseshoes, is there gonna be a horseshoe pit? I mean, I would think yes, right?
Something like that.
Right, okay. Are you gonna have a net, uh, somewhere where you offer volleyballs and badminton for people? I love doing both of those, I love, I love volleyball and I love badminton. I'm gonna try to make it so that it's, it's a place that somebody comes and can't wait to come back. As long as it's within the guidelines that you folks are, are agreeable to.
Okay, we will look forward to seeing you on the second, and if you, if you cannot make it, please let me know.
You know better than that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't just not show up, no, that's not who I am.
I didn't think so, but I just wanted to say that.
We're adding them horseshoes and them other things, we need to show that on his plan too.
Okay, do I? Okay.
Like he said, if there's fifty kids there, and then, you know, whatever.
Okay.
They're gonna want something to do without having to leave this campground.
Okay, look at, hey, when I get out of here, mentally, I'm probably gonna say to Evelyn to get her notes out on her phone, and I'm gonna start dict, I'm gonna start, you know, dictating some things for her to jot down. And, uh, it, we're just gonna keep plugging away at it till we get it right.
I mean, you could put in a hundred fifty thousand dollar swimming pool.
Heated, heated.
Sorry, you got the river, I keep forgetting you got the river.
Heated, right, Darrell?
I live on the river, but I got a swimming pool.
Do you live right on the river?
Yeah.
That's beautiful.
Okay, we have to move on, any more questions or concerns? Alrighty, thank you very much for coming, we appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks everybody for your questions and concerns, and I mean that.
We'll see you the second of June.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, let's go back to, um, Blaze Brewery and do the conditional use permit for that.
So what, page fifty-six?
Uh, what page are we on? This is fifty-two, in my book, anyway. Oh, it is fifty-five, you're right, Darrell, closer than I am. Okay, let me get my act together, no worries here.
No further, Andy, we were a year ago.
He has no idea.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll talk about that in a little bit, how's that, guys? So now we're on page fifty-five, standards applicable for a conditional use permit for the Blaze Brewery. So that's six G, Donna?
Yep.
And, um, we'll go A, B, C, D, our usual routine. A, the use will conserve the short cover and visual, as well as actual access to water bodies, not applicable. And, and you will be getting a copy of this, Andy, we'll, I, um, usually, within a week, I have the notice of decision written, and I would send it to you.
Great.
Okay. B, traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance, and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with stand, with performance standards in the ordinance. I think that's something that we need to talk about as far, number one, he will need the DOT, um, permit cuts, or whatever they cut, whatever-
DOT?
Yeah, Department of Transportation cuts for the road.
You already have a, a permit, you already have a permit, you're right?
You already have those, correct, right, but we just need to put that in there for, legally.
Already have, sir.
And, and it will be given to Craig?
I would think that that entranceway, even going down the hill, I think, I'd have to look it up to make sure, but I think it's for every ten miles an hour, you're gonna have one car lane. Does that sound right to you?
Yep.
So if it, if it was forty miles an hour, I, I believe there's four car lanes on either side of that entrance, even going down over that hill.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, well, like you said, that's an enforcement problem, though.
Yeah, yeah, it's an enforcement problem.
Yeah. But, uh, he does have the, the cuts, he needs to have the cuts. The entranceway has been approved by Craig.
Are you still on B?
I'm still on B.
Okay.
Correct? So for the brewery, that's all we need, as far as traffic is concerned.
I would think so.
Okay.
I mean, if, if the state will put up a flashing sign, though, it's slow, down the corner.
I, I, I will go back at-
You could petition the state to do it, but it's more of like the choice, it's an enforcement thing to make sure they-
But, but, but I will go back to the, yeah, I will go back to the DOT and see if I can find reference to that conversation I had, because I know there was something that the gentleman told me the state would do for the town. Unfortunately, I can't remember.
I also talked about striping that road.
I was on the, as I remember it, I was-
That's the town that's to do that.
They said it's an enforcement problem.
Yeah, they did say that, but I remember talking to someone who did say something about the state would either put, I don't know whether it was flashing signs, uh, speed signs, or something in the signage, uh, area that would-
I know, I've dealt with the state, and they don't change, they do it all on houses per mile, and they don't change the speed limit because you don't like it.
Yeah, that, I'm sure of. Okay, is everybody comfortable with the, the, uh, traffic?
Yep.
Okay. C, the site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations, that's not applicable. D, adequate provisions for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made. In this particular one, the, uh, if Craig does not already have the final septic design from Kenny Gardner, I don't think he does, they need to get the final septic design that will handle the, um, not only the bathrooms, but the cleaning of the tanks, and how that is going to be disposed of in the septic tanks that will meet the requirements for that.
Just have a quick question.
Sure.
You, you dealt with Kenny Gardner on this?
Yes, that's correct.
I find Kenny very thorough, he never questioned what was gonna happen to the wastewater or anything like that, and the-
He did, he did not, so I don't know.
You were with Kenny or his son?
Uh, so Matt Haskell, the owner, has been the one who's been dealing with him, and Kenny's been sending me the information, so I don't know what's being, I'm conveying to Matt, and Matt's conveying to Ken, so I don't know, I don't know exactly, uh, what information's being received, but-
And, um, the other thing was, um, the solid waste. There will be, uh, is there a need for an outside, uh, um, waste disposal?
Dumpster.
Dumpster, person?
Likely, I would think.
Is there, I don't, there was not one on your, on your-
I do, I do not have one on the plan, but I think it's a good idea to have one.
Okay, yes. So, so a, a contract with a solid waste disposal company? And you already have your stormwater permit? No?
We do not.
Okay, so the, um, um, let me see if I'm getting ahead of myself here.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm sure you're probably aware about the-
They still leave you hanging on what how long it's gonna take?
Yes. Unfortunately, yes.
Okay.
Is the owner and-
I didn't understand what you just said.
Are you both aware that the town trash pickup is not applicable to businesses? They know that, okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Darrell's comment was just that the state is slow in getting the stormwater permit to them.
Okay.
Um, all right. And now we're on to E. Adequate provision for the transportation, storage, and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made. Will there be hazardous materials? No, I don't believe so, that, that's not applicable. F, a stormwater drainage system meeting state standards shall be installed, that's what we were just talking about. They need to get their stormwater permit from the DEP. G, adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made. And that is part of the plan that Craig would approve.
Of the construction site.
Uh, uh, you're right.
Yeah.
Have that up before I do any digging of the stuff.
Yeah. H, there is adequate water supply to meet the demands of the, for the, of the proposed use and for fire protection purposes. And in here, um, let me see, where did I see that? Or maybe it was the other one I was looking at.
Raises another question, is this, is this building gonna be sprinkled?
Well, it will have to meet, I would think so, it would have to meet whatever state fire codes are.
Yes, um, I believe it's going to have to be, that we're still, we gotta work with the fire, the state fire marshal through those, those details prior to construction. But based on the size of the building, I think that's probably a likely scenario, but-
And also, they would need the approval of the, of the fire chief here in Livingston?
Yep.
Did anybody chance find out what the gallon's permitted on the existing well, did you?
I didn't, but, um, Earl was telling us, when we were on the site walk, what was he telling us? It was a big number, I remember being-
See, I don't remember him mentioning that.
He did, when we were kinda standing there before the site walk, he said what he got in his, um-
'Cause they're usually on the cap, but, oh, no, his is buried.
Yeah, it was-
They buried his, actually, well, right.
Yeah, he gave us a number at the site walk, I can reach out to him and ask him.
I was just curious what he did.
Are we comfortable about the water supply demands?
Yeah.
Under H?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, you know-
I'd say the water is probably, you don't know what, I, you're probably gonna take care of your water before you go ahead and spend all that money, right?
Well, under this, under what I have from our minutes last, uh, I asked if water capacity testing has been done, and you said there will be a drilled well, and then capacity testing will be done. Depending upon capacity, it may mean more wells drilled to meet capacity.
Correct.
So in our notice of decision, it should say that they will have adequate wells to meet the demands for the water supply and fire protection purposes. Under I, the provisions for buffer strips and onsite landscaping provide adequate protection to neighboring properties, including public areas from detrimental features of the development, such as noise, glare, fumes, dust, odor, adverse visual impact, and the like. And we've already said that, you, you have said the lighting will be aimed down, so as not to interfere with the, um, the butters.
Correct.
Um, as far as glare, fumes and odor, I don't think that's an issue, is?
I wouldn't think so.
Um, and you have, already have the apple orchards that are a buffer.
Correct.
And there will be landscaping in front of the brewery that, that faces onto Dulverge?
Correct.
Okay, so there will be landscaping on, uh, in front of the, the building. Okay, J, all performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use shall be met, yes, they will. And K, the use will not result in unsafe, unhelpful conditions, correct, they will not. And K, the use will not result in unsafe, unhelpful conditions. Correct, they will not. Anybody can interrupt me at any time? L, the use will not have an adverse impact on natural beauty, historic sites, or rare and irreplaceable natural areas. It's correct, it will not. It's section eleven is performance standards, I think. I just wanna check on a couple of things in that. Also, the, any signs, any signs will have to be approved by the code enforcement officer?
Is this a condition?
Yes, yes, yes.
You said performance standards?
Yeah, performance standards, start on page one hundred and eight.
Yeah.
I just wanna go down quickly through it. This is section eleven, Donna, on page a hundred, starts on hundred and eight. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Let's start on page one hundred and nine with eleven B. Air emissions for commercial industrial uses. I think we've already addressed that, that that is not going to be a problem. Buffer areas?
One oh nine.
One oh nine. Eleven C is buffer areas setbacks for commercial industrial uses only. It says no industrial or commercial buildings or uses shall be established in or but a residential use unless a landscape buffer strip. We've already addressed that. I think we have addressed the issues that C refers to, eleven C refers to. Eleven D is about explosives materials. We've already said that's not applicable. E, disposal of noxious materials.
Excuse me, Joyce, what did you say for C?
C, we've already talked about that before, that they're gonna put landscaping in front of the building, and they have a natural buffer with the apple trees on the other side.
Thank you.
Under E, eleven E, disposal of noxious materials is not applicable. F is above-ground storage facilities for chemical products. That's not applicable. G is storage tank standards. You won't have any petroleum storage tanks or anything.
No.
That's. H is glare. We've already addressed that, that the lights, we addressed that in the previous. I is landscaping. We've already addressed that. J is noise. That's not applicable. K is off-street parking and loading. That's been addressed on the site plan. It's on page one hundred and eleven, yeah.
Did you say addressed?
It's already been addressed when we talked, under the conditional use standards. If anybody disagrees with what I'm saying, just speak up.
I got a question.
Yep.
What are you gonna do with the mash?
With the what, sir?
The mash?
The mash.
The, whatever the product is that you use in making.
They left all the fruit.
Yep, they, they ship it off-site and put it in an approved waste facility. But I will, I can get some more information for that.
All right. It's not what I'm.
On-site, no.
No.
Okay. No.
No, that's recyclable, huh?
I don't believe so, no.
Well, this is very applicable. You come at the right time. Eleven L, dispose, refuse disposal for commercial industrials. So any. We're on one hundred and sixteen. Under, under L.
An L?
Yep, so any waste product will be removed from the prop, from the property and disposed of at a licensed facility?
Yep.
M is streets, we've already, N is sent. Signs, under eleven P would be the next one, and we've already said that they have, if they decide to have a sign, they have to have it approved by the code enforcement officer. I think we have the most extensive sign design language of any. Q is soils, that's, we've already addressed that. Soil erosion under R, this is on one hundred and thirty-three, Donna. Soil erosion control, that, you know, obviously, they meet the standards and will be approved by the code enforcement officer. Under eleven S, storage of materials. All materials stored outdoors shall be stored in such a manner as to prevent the breeding and harboring of insects, rats, or vermis, vermin. There shall be, this shall be accomplished by enclosures. Enclosures in containers, the raised materials above the ground. You're not going to be storing any product outside, okay? T, stormwater management. We've already said that he needs to get the stormwater management permit from the DEP. U is timber harvesting. It's not applicable. V is not applicable. And W is traffic impacts and street access. We've already discussed that in the conditional use section.
Did you say that's been addressed?
Yes, been addressed. X is water quality, and Y is water supply. We've just spoken of that, that they are going to come back with a, to let Craig know if they need, how many wells they will need on the property. Okay? Are there anything, are there any other conditions the board thinks that we've left out here?
Free beer once a week?
For life.
I don't see any of the, in my notes, I think we've addressed what I had. All right, so is there a motion to approve the, I gotta make sure I get the right name of it. The Blaze Brewery on Dulles Ridge Road with the conditions as noted. Thank you. Darrell made the motion and said a second. Bob seconded. Any questions? All in favor? Okay, thank you, Andy. We have it all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So within the next five or six days, once I get the minutes here from Donna, I will write up the notice of decision. And I should mail it to you, not to Mr. Haskell, right?
That'd be great, yes.
Not a problem.
There's a lot of people in town looking forward to that.
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, we're really looking forward to it. So thank you for working with us. We appreciate it.
Oh, well, thank you. You've been very thorough. It's much appreciated.
Thank you.
All right.
That's how you do a project.
Our next agenda item is to do the minutes, and the minutes of May fifth. Are you all set to do the minutes, Donna? All ready? I'll go through what I have, and then the rest of the board can chip in. Under Hanscom School Road solar site?
Yep.
First line, it says, the printing manager, Novella, came forward and said. Wait a minute. Said, said the size of the two projects mentioned have been decreased. Cross out in-size at the end of, at the end of the sentence, just cross out, cause you're repeating in-size twice. That's all right. Don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. In the last paragraphs, beginning the wire fence.
Wire fence, yeah.
This is just picky. Just take out the word is. It says the wire fence is about eight feet high, and it is about. You can leave it in. I don't care.
It is ours.
With me, that's just me.
Okay.
On the next page, first paragraph, first sentence. Take out and it is, so the sentence will read, his company is leasing the land for twenty-five years. You don't need and it is in there. Under the next headline, conditional use permit for Blaze, in the first paragraph, first line, remove the word he. Andy Morrow of BH Two M came forward to speak, and he said, and said, just take out the word he. Once again, that's me being picky. My apologies. Under the, the fourth paragraph down, starting with original plans.
Yep.
It's a run-on sentence.
Oh, it is.
Build, a period after building, remove the word and, and then A is a capital.
Where do you want the period?
After the word building, instead of saying and, just make it two sentences. Next page, three.
And stop the next one with access to the southwest.
Yeah, so there'll be two, yeah, it'll be, no, no, it will be two sentences. Yeah, yeah. And the second sentence will begin with access that will have, that will just have a capital A, cause it's.
Yeah.
Okay. On the next page. Six paragraph down that begins with Bob Gervais. Second sentence, you repeat his last name. You don't need to repeat it. We know who Bob is.
Andy? Wanna take Andy?
No, 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 no. We're one, two, three, four, five, six paragraphs down, begins with Bob Gervais.
Yeah.
And then the second sentence, you say Bob Gervais again. I would take Gervais out of that second sentence and just say Bob.
Just say Bob.
Yeah, Bob. And then obviously, the next paragraph down, you have dash, 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 under Craig's spelling of his name.
I was home and didn't have his spelling.
That's okay. That's all right. Yeah, you said that. The next page over. I think that's all I have. Or did you want Ben McCall?
Right while you're there, it says any Morell, it should say Andy.
Oh, that's right.
With the Craig, dot, dot, dot. Any Morell.
It should be Andy Morell, under the second sentence of the, of the one that begins with Craig.
What's his name? Andy, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, but you've got any Morell.
You put any.
Can you show where this is?
I got A and D wrong.
No, no.
I got a question on this.
Hold on just a minute. She's figuring this out.
You're still going, okay.
Isn't that right?
No.
Andy Morell.
You've, you've got any Morell. The do you. We have any Morell, but it should be Andy.
Oh, you down on the wrong one. I have Andy's one.
Oh, 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 we're off on track. So next one down.
Yeah, okay. And I just have one more. At the, under other, at the bottom of the page, you've got Ben blank, blank, blank. Ben's last name is McCall, M C capital C A L L.
Couldn't remember.
Yeah, right, right. Well, I knew that, yeah, no problem. So anyway, anyone else have corrections?
Yeah, I do. Under the Hanscom School solar site, it was my understanding, help me out if I'm wrong here, that they're leasing the Hanscom School Road site, but they own Secocas. And that's not what this says.
Where, where's this one?
That is correct, Bob. And if, if, if you look at the two sheets he gave us, you can see that on one, it says that it's owned by somebody.
So what I'm saying, Donna, is on, under the six ninety-seven Secocas Ave.
I thought that was the one they owned.
No, they own it, but you don't have that. If you look at the second thing, it says his company is leasing the land for twenty-five years, et cetera, et cetera. You need to take that paragraph and move it up to Hanscom School Road.
Jeez, I thought he said that at that one. He was all mixed up.
He was backwards.
He was mixed up. Yeah, oh, yeah, he was.
He went back and changed it.
He did.
So I understand why you got. Owning it is leasing it is for Hanscom School.
That's for Hanscom School. So that paragraph that says his company is leasing, move that up to the Hanscom School.
Okay. Yes.
And.
Could somebody tell me how Hanscom School Road is spelled?
Just like.
I've seen it every old switch.
Well, this is an E.
H J N S C O M.
You've got it right.
Oh, okay.
H J N S C O M?
Yeah.
H A N S C O M.
Yeah, you've got it right.
E O M.
No, no, you've got it right. Don't change anything. You've got it right.
You have it correct.
Yes. Anything else?
And you should probably just put a single sentence under the Secocas one. Well, by the way, Secocas is spelled wrong. Six ninety-seven Secocas.
It should be, you've got an A at the end of Secocas instead of an S. Six ninety-seven Secocas Ave.
I S.
You should have a.
A there.
Just a single, single sentence in there indicating that this, this site is owned by the company, however we wanna say that. The company owns the land for this particular site. Okay, that's it.
So there is, that Joyce took out on the wire fence, the last stuff. Yeah. It actually needs to be put after the wire fence. It should say.
There you go.
The wire fence is about eight feet high and about one foot above the ground.
Great.
That allows, it should be allows, but anyway, that allows small animals. Now, I see on that last sentence, I've got this site is leased. That's correct. That is correct. For Hanscom School, right.
Well, I did find one more. I don't know what page it is, cause my print is just different than yours, but back to that one where you hadn't completed Craig's last name.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on the page three, Donna.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, that's not the one I want. I'm sorry, that's not the one. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Yeah, here it is right here. It's under the Hanscom School. Did you fix this, John?
Way back on page one.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, you've got Mr. Adenozio, whatever his name is.
Company name will be on a sign on the fence near the double gate.
Yeah, and then she said it again or something. You fixed that already?
I did.
Or did you know?
No, no, what's wrong with it?
Okay, here's what you should say. What it says now, you've got Mr.
The second paragraph, Donna, that begins with.
Second paragraph down, it says, Mr. Whatever his name is, says, the company name will be on a sign on the fence near the double gate, and will have the name of the company, and we've already said that. So let's try this. Mr. Adenozio said the company name and emergency phone number.
Ah, that's right. Yeah, okay.
Will be on a sign at the double gate.
We're gonna take a water that out.
Or just.
Yeah, and the rest of it, you don't even need.
Company name.
And emergency phone number.
Right.
Company name and emergency phone number.
Will be on a sign on the fence near the double gate, period. The fact that it's lighted, I'm not so sure we absolutely have to have.
On a sign near the double gate.
Yep, period. That's it. The rest of it can go away.
Yeah.
Any other corrections?
You wanna keep once a month, someone would.
Yeah, you keep that in there, yeah.
I can do that. Great job.
Any other?
Victoria, nothing?
All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes of May fifth as corrected?
Who made the motion?
I did. Bob seconded.
Wait a minute, there was one more here.
Oh, wait a minute. He says he's got one more.
Cause you just jogged my memory. There was one area in here on the, this is Chair Foley asked for a motion to accept the application from Matt Haskell.
What page?
I, I don't know. It's like the second page, maybe?
It's on page three.
It's just before Ray Marshall's campground, whatever, that paragraph.
Oh, yeah, it's on page three.
It says Chair Foley asked for a motion to accept the application from Matt Haskell to build the brewery. And then Pete Landman seconded it. There's nowhere it says who made that motion.
Who made the motion, right.
I think it was me, but I'm not sure. I think it was me.
We'll say it was you.
So it should read, Bob Gervais moved and Pete seconded the motion.
Yes, yep.
I don't even have Pete in here.
Yes, you do.
You got the seconded. It just never got made. Okay.
Okay, now I'm ready to go.
So all in favor, I made the motion, Bob seconded, of accepting the minutes of May fifth as amended. Thank you. All righty. Unless there is any more discussion, is there any more discussion? I should ask.
So we adjourned?
Well, we're about to have a motion to adjourn. Bob made a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Victoria seconded. All in favor? Thank you, everyone. We will see you on June second. We're ready to be turned off.